Yeah. We have no way. Let's see it. No, John.
Last time was really.
Yeah.
I think it's Dr. Grace.
Usually.
Okay.
Oh.
Last time was really.
Yeah.
That's what brings the people out.
Okay. Oh.
Just for you.
I got it.
That's what brings the people out.
Okay. Oh.
Just for you.
I got it. I got it. I'm saying. Oh. I'm starting to start. 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 That's why. There's a chance that person was there. She was walking. 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 She was walking.
This meeting in order to start with the president's. I'm literally. To fight the United States of America and to rely on it for its stance, a nation of God, individual, whether reading the Constitution or all.
Executive session, we talked about a couple of legal negotiations that are going on right now.
Could you please talk louder?
Certainly.
Thank you.
We've talked about personnel legal and then labor negotiations. Public comments on agenda items. Please stand and state your name, please.
Okay. Kristen Vita, Chestnut Avenue, DuBois. Regarding item seven, the waste management proposed commercial increase. If this increase is outside of the existing contract, would it be appropriate to bid out of service or consider allowing commercial property owners to select their own garbage You don't need to answer that right now. I'm just thought for that item. And then regarding item number thirteen, the treasurer's work area relocation. I know that in Sandy Township, the treasurer works from home, so I'm curious what the city ordinance says about providing office space for the treasurer. And the second item regarding that, our city manager had stated that the treasurer's workplace was relocated to council chambers to protect the security and confidentiality interests of the city of DuBois. Given that Lisa LaBresta Becker serves as an elected official and is not a city employee, can you provide detail into what led to that action? I know as a resident, I would like to know what behaviors contributed to that and if any city employees who worked in the treasurer's office, if they came to the city manager and expressed concerns that led to those actions. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Yes, Shirley DeRouge, Downtown DuBois, Inc. I just wanted to comment on, because I don't know, number nineteen and number twenty, the tree plant and the green trees. And I don't know what all you have. I know I have already presented at the redevelopment authority meeting for the corner of Westlong and Jard and for forty Westlong, but the downtown is eligible for a grant, a community grant through Xylem for trees and tree skates for up to $10,000, and I wanted to present that to you.
Can we, you and I get together on that?
Yes.
Okay. If that's okay.
Yeah.
And then once we have a conclusion, we'll bring it back to everybody.
Okay.
Okay. But we'll just talk about it now. We've received two grants already, so we'll work on that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? Go on once. Okay. We'll move on to approval of minutes. Take a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes, August 26th, 10:24.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on a motion.
Agonba.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galpin.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Registry of invoices, autographs.
Make the motion to approve the autodraft, $12,344.55.
Second. Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Agonba.
Yes.
Jackson, yes. Galpin.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
General fund.
Motion to approve the general fund in the amount of $234,894.29.
Second. Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Agonba.
Yes.
Jackson, yes. Galpin.
Yeah.
Dietz.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
And there are no Penn Vest invoices this morning. New business, waste management, proposed commercial increase. Gentlemen?
Thank you very much. Do you need us to state?
Might probably be.
Be happy to, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely. I'll be. Great. Hey, everybody. My name is Eddie Honner from Waste Management. This is Ralph Zorn.
Hello.
Ralph is our municipal manager. I'm your local manager for waste management. Many of you have known for a lot of years. Thank you for having me today. Thanks for putting us on the schedule. We're here tonight to propose a rate increase for commercial business. Reason we're here is because we had started a new plan with the city in 2020, where the city is doing the billing now. Lots happened since 2020. Anyone in the trucking business would probably tell you that expenses are crazy. So I can tell you, just in the last couple of years since 2020, our landfill disposals increased 25%. Recycling processing that we do in the city of DuBois increased 300%. Our CNG fuel, actually, which we use for the city of DuBois since 2020, has gone up 332%. And it's just been an enormous increase for us to take on all of our lubricants we use for the trucks, which we use a lot, increased 90%. And actually, our labor supply, just for us, over the last several years, bringing on new employees, it's costing us per employee about $60,000. And with benefits and payroll taxes, we're up over $80,000 now, where we used to be in the $60,000 range. That's since 2020. So they're really real increases, and they're out there. We came tonight to propose to the city to consider an increase. Certainly something we would welcome if you would be able to do that. We actually try to always meet the city's needs. I think we do it really well. We have a lot of great relationships with the residents and the commercial customers of the city of DuBois, and we try to employ everybody we possibly can locally. And we do, you know, almost every one of our employees is Clearfield Jefferson County, everyone. And it's a great place to work. We really build careers. We're not here to give people jobs. Everybody we hire, we want to keep them for 40 years if we can. And, you know, unfortunately, a lot of people we hire are my age now, right? Or probably aren't going to be here in 40 years, that's for sure. But, you know, we're building careers, good employer, solid place to work, have excellent benefits, really appreciate the opportunity to service the city of DuBois. We're grateful, really are. And it takes a lot of effort every day to pull it off, because there's a lot of people in the city of DuBois, there's a lot going on. You know, quite frankly, I think the program we have here is the best in Pennsylvania. Ralph manages all of our municipal accounts with me, does a fantastic job, and I think you'll agree, Ralph, that the program here is, you know, really top-notch.
Oh, yeah.
Along with Sandy Township, certainly lots of services there. Is there any questions I can answer for anybody? You know, I know you're considering, we hope you consider, but I'll be happy to answer any questions, or if anybody has any comments, I'll try to address them.
And I can actually, if you don't mind, piggyback off of that. Like Ed was saying, 25% on the landfill increase over the last couple of years, that's a, that's a big increase, you know? So with the proposal of this price increase, it's not, not from the profit standpoint, but it's to recover our operational increases that we're experiencing to continue providing, you know, good service to the city and the businesses within the city. In addition to that, I know that there's been some upset businesses with some of the overages or contamination charges that you all have received on those incidents. I know Sean and I spoke on that, and I will tell you that we don't want those charges to happen. When that happens, you know, to X amount of businesses on one route, that means one of our drivers having to make an extra drive out to the landfill, driver hours, you know, it's regulated obviously by the Department of Transportation. We get to the point where maybe we hit those and we don't get all the businesses serviced because X amount of businesses were over the capacity that they're used to, and the same with the contamination charges, our recycling truck is not going to pick that up then. So we have to route a trash truck to come out and recover it. When those charges happen, we do want to work with you to, you know, adjust the service frequency. Does it need increase? Does your container size needs increase? Because we don't want those charges to happen to you. It's more money for you to pay, it's more work for us to put on the roads. So if we can just, you know, adjust those accordingly, that's the ultimate goal with those charges. I know another one was our customer service, making sure that you all can actually speak to somebody, so providing that information to Sean, because I know that it's always changing. I know some of us like to go on the smartphones, but even myself, I like to talk to a human whenever I'm calling a utility company. So making sure that you all have that information on, you know, the city of DuBois website and can call and speak to somebody when those situations are happening is important to us, and I know it's important to you, so.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to reference a four yard, because I have a four yard at my business in Sykesville, okay? In 2008, a four yard was $119.04. This is your charge to us, okay? Not our charge to the public, okay? I don't know if you know this, but the city marks up the trash bills that the citizens pay, okay? And that's been done, we need to look at that, that was done in the past, okay? So in, when you got the new contract in 2018, okay, it was not a 10% increase, which took it to $130.94. Correct me if any of these numbers are wrong, because I'm just going by the information that was provided to you, okay? And then in 2022, it went to $173.10. That's a 32% increase from, so in, from 18 to 22, in four years, it went up 42%. Explain that to me, and then you're coming back and asking us for another seven.
Well, I'd be happy to, Pat, and thank you. We did have a rate increase in '22, and was it seven and a half?
Eight and a half. Eight point five percent is the number that I just ran on the.
No, it was anywhere from 15%.
You're talking in the city?
Yes.
Yeah, so that was our.
15% to 47%.
Well, you know what? In fairness to me, I don't have the numbers in front of me, Pat.
Correct.
So I apologize, I can't give you that information. But I can tell you, our increase to the city was eight and a half percent. So unless there's something I don't know, I don't want to sit here and debate that with you tonight.
Okay.
Because I just don't have the information available to me. Be happy to look at it.
I'm going by the rate sheets that I found in our system.
Okay.
Okay? That were, that were given to us.
And that's what we charge the cities. I don't know what the city's charging. Quite frankly, I don't, you know, don't know where it's going.
Yeah, and I don't have.
But if you want to take it offline, and we can.
Absolutely.
Discuss it, I'd be happy to do it.
Okay.
Because I just don't have that information.
And I know, and I have somebody else that picks up my trash in Sykesville, and it's $100 a month, I have a four yard picked up once a week.
Hey, I completely get it. You know, quite frankly, we're never going to be the cheapest rate in town. All I can tell you is that the drivers that work for waste management are the best. I can tell you this, if you're comfortable with having people that aren't screened properly for drugs, if you're comfortable with people that don't have a good safety record, if you're comfortable working with people that don't have the right insurances, that break environmental laws, that break DOT laws, then I welcome you to hire them for the city. But we're not going to do that. I mean, I personally won't do it, never have. It's going to be done the right way, or it's not going to be done at all.
We're not asking.
Period. But that's the reason why.
It's my job to.
You know, like I said, Pat, personally, we're building careers. You know, we're paying benefits to people. I would think the city would want to have a contractor here that's going to do everything right. There is provisions in our contract. In order for us to provide that service to the city, it is going to cost more. However, it protects you. And in addition to that, the amount of services we provide to the city at no cost are enormous. Just do the math.
There's a lot of numbers.
At the end of the year, divided by the number of businesses and a number of homes, it tells the story very, very quickly. But there's a difference between DuBois and other communities. Your blighted properties are always taken care of, there's never any issues. You call us, you say, hey, I need this house taken down, we're going to need a trailer, we're going to need a container. Hey, no problem. It could cost us $25,000, $30,000, but it's done, like, right now. And that's worth something in this city. It's a small amount of money, but quite frankly, it's worth it. I've been in this business for a long time. I'm coming off 40 years, okay? So I've seen it all. We've done 20, we bought 26 family companies that hated each other over the last 40 years and put them all together. I can tell you, I learned a lot from buying these family businesses. I know what they do, I know how they operate. You know, the biggest challenge for us is bringing them on board. It's a big shot for them, right? Because, you know, they're going to go to work with somebody working next to them, maybe making double the amount of wages, right? But it's a big, it's a, it's a big process, it's a big company, we treat people right, we have to pay people group medical benefits, and you want that in your community. You don't want that want to happen. And quite frankly, you know, when it comes to these things, we're generally the most competitive when it comes to this type of bid process, because no matter what happens, every day, something's got to happen. You know, a truck's going to go down, you know, Main Street. You know, we're going to make that happen. So that's why it's always going to cost a little bit more, we're sometimes a bigger company, but, you know, I think the value that the residential customers get is superb, and what we provide for the commercial customers, same thing. You know, quite frankly, when it comes to overages, like at our customers, you know, for many, many years, we had picked up so much waste that a customer, somebody could be paying for a four yard and have 10 yards of garbage out there, it just disappears. It just happened forever. So now, we have smart trucks. Our trucks go out, they look at the container, it takes a picture of it before it dumps it, records it going into the truck, we know exactly how much garbage was there. Our goal is to get to that customer and say, hey, you need to increase your service. And we're subsidizing that, so.
And that's not in the contract about the overfill, though. It was never stated in the contract, so I don't, you're charging for things that are not in the contract.
Well, actually, but here's the thing, though. Would you prefer us just to pick up all four yards or take all eight? You know the answer to that, Pat.
Okay. I'm just saying, that's not in the contract.
Right. Right, so we.
You guys just charge that on your own.
We only need to take four yards.
Okay.
Right?
All right. And the city's been good to you, too.
Hey, no disagreement.
You have, you have no counterfeited. We do the billing, and we pay you, and everybody pays for their garbage, and you know it hasn't been that way in the past. So the city's good to you, too. And we picked up a lot of customers for you. You probably didn't even know about people out there until you found out that they had a water bill and we told you, you know, so I mean.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you, Pat.
Yeah, I mean, so.
No, no question about it. No question about it.
Okay. And I do get a little bit, I get some complaints from citizens about your customer service. There's nobody to call, and you don't get a good response. That needs to change.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for me? Be happy to answer.
Yeah, can you get me a, you're stating about your expenses. Can you get me a P and L for the years 18 through 23, please?
Probably not give you a P and L, but I could probably show you.
Okay.
You know, just as.
And I'm not interested in your expenses, like interest, taxes, depreciation. I'd like to see an EBITDA financial statement from you, at least as many years as you can give it to me.
Yep.
And let's prove those expenses that you're getting increased. I have no problem then.
Okay, well, thank you. That sounds pretty reasonable to me. Thank you, guys. Anything else for me?
Anybody else here? All right. Get us out.
Yes. What's the.
Directed here.
Sorry.
Yeah, this was just a presentation.
Okay.
For the council members, please.
All right.
You can ask them at the end, you can ask me.
Now?
At the end.
All.
At the end, it's timed up for comments.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Appreciate the time, everybody. Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can't turn it into a big, big discussion. We'll work on it, okay? Norman Schaefer, conditional use application, Eleven McClure Street.
Yeah, I'll just handle a little bit of a background on that. So we did get a conditional use application in from Norman Schaefer for a garage at Eleven McClure Street. There were several findings of fact and conclusions of law that we found, so I'm just going to state the four basic issues that were found from the conditional use hearing. Specifically, the amount of floor area used for such occupation shall not exceed 25% of the total floor area of the dwelling. There was no testimony or evidence submitted for that criteria. No more than one non-resident shall be employed. Again, there's no evidence on how many employees will be employed at that business. A sufficient number of off-street parking spaces shall be provided as deemed necessary, located within 10 feet of a side or rear yard lot line, and shall be paved with bituminous material. There was no testimony or evidence submitted for, for that criteria. And additionally, and then probably the biggest one, the activity or occupation shall be conducted entirely within the dwelling by the owner occupant of the dwelling. Here, the applicant testified and provided photographs that the proposed use automobile service station would be performed in the detached garage inside the structure. Thus, it didn't, didn't meet the criteria of that, that ordinance. So our solicitor's recommendation is to, to deny the request for conditional use.
Take a motion?
We'll make that motion to deny the conditional use application.
Second. Properly moved in second. Any discussion on the motion? Vote on a motion.
Agonba.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galpin.
Yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Tire recycling event, October 2nd, 7:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m.
Yeah, this is just a notification, a community service event, that we are going to take up to four tires per resident at our garage on Parkway Drive on October 2nd from 7:30 to 2:30 p.m. So light tire trucks or car tire trucks will be, will be collected and taken to the landfill at no cost to the resident. Additionally, we also have one at Sandy Township on September 30th for Sandy Township residents that may be in attendance. The event is sponsored by the Clearfield County Solid Waste Authority, so we appreciate their, their help in getting this tire recycling event together.
And tires are one thing that you're not allowed to put in the landfill. You're not allowed to just throw them away. That's why we do this. Game commission, land exchange agreement.
Yeah, we've been working on.
Number 10.
Six one.
Oh! How could I forget you? I crossed, I checked the wrong one. Approved to advertise regeneration timber harvest, compartment one. Approved to advertise regeneration timber harvest, compartment one.
Yeah, I can turn it over to Kenny Kane.
Kenny Kane from Generations Forestry, the consulting forester managing the city timberlands. So we have a regeneration harvest scheduled on compartment one. It's been part of the harvest cycle, and we've had this planned for about a decade that this would take place. We decided to do half of the area that we initially planned, mainly due to the success of the first bid that we had on the compartment nine timber sale earlier in the year. So compartment one, the fieldwork will be concluded probably in the next two to three business days. So I would recommend having the bids due either October 9th or 11th so that we could have approval done at the upcoming board meeting.
Yeah, and I'll just, yeah, my recommendations, we move forward with authorization to advertise. And kind of piggybacking on that is the agreement that's going to come next after this agenda. So we just need a motion.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve the advertised regeneration timber harvest, compartment one.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any question on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galpin.
Yeah.
Dietz.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Now we'll get to the game commission land exchange agreement.
Yeah, so this is a land exchange agreement. This has been in the works for at least 15-plus years. I think we still have some maps, actually, in certain locations about trying to obtain the game commission property that's just south of Interstate 80 that borders the city land already owned by the city. And we were able to reach an agreement with the game commission on an exchange of about 170 acres that, south Interstate 80, just north of the Doolittle's complex, the city owns some land in there, for about 204 acres. One area is compartment one, and then another area that's also out on the watershed property. We think this will be an excellent benefit for the city of DuBois, and especially the consolidation. It will provide economic development for the area, and a really great opportunity to develop an area that's right off the interstate. The land, the existing land is difficult to even get to, to be able to hunt on, so we think that this is just going to be a benefit all around to everybody.
Good deal.
Additionally, the game commission's allowing us to conduct the timber harvest before we give them the property, which is even a bigger benefit to the residents of the city. So my, yeah, my recommendation would be to...
Definite recommendation.
Move forward with the agreement.
Yeah, and those game lands, that got separated when Interstate 80 got put through, so there's that other part on the clear run side of that. So like Sean said, it's been in the works for a long time, and they just could never come up with an agreement on the land exchange. It used to be five to one exchange. They wanted five acres for every one acre up there, so it's kind of nice to see it being pretty close.
Plus, they're good stewards for our reservoir. So it's just pretty much like us owning it.
Yep.
And we get a lot better land to develop.
Win.
Do you need a motion for the...
I have some.
Make a motion for the game commission land exchange agreement. Second. Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galpin.
Yeah.
Dietz.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
City of DuBois Police Minimum Municipal Obligation for 2025, $4,005,000, $405,780. I wish it was that. $780. I'm just wishing. That's our, what we have to pay into the police pension.
Yep, so just seeking approval of that. Some of that cost will be all set from state aid, so we do get a state aid, two units per officer, which probably will range in about the $10,000 range per officer for us.
I make the motion to approve the City of DuBois Police MMO for 2025 in the amount of $405,788.
Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galpin.
Yeah.
Dietz.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Treasurers' Work Area Relocation.
Yeah, this is just a notification that the treasurer's work area has been relocated. Folks can still make an appointment with the treasurer, see the treasurer in the office, and pay taxes as normal.
Do you need a motion on that? Just information. Fair Housing Resolution Number 2024-0388.
This is a required housing resolution for the CDBG program. We do this annually. It's just a list that talks about what to do if you're discriminated in rental or purchase of home or leasing or financing of housing. So it just tells you that process, lays out the process to how to report that. So again, just a normal resolution we do annually.
Make a motion to approve the fair housing resolution number 2024-0388.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galpin.
Yeah.
Dietz.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
MBE/WBE Resolution Number 2024-0389. John?
Yep, this is just a resolution. Again, this is an annual resolution we do in support of the CDBG program. This resolution just states our goals for 5% minority business enterprise and 3% for women business enterprises, so that's our goal when we award contracts under the CDBG program.
Make the motion to approve MBE/WBE Resolution Number 2024-0389.
Second. Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galpin.
Yeah.
Dietz.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Number 16, 650 DuBois Street, Generational Land LLC Lot Consolidation.
I'm going to turn this over to Zach and Mike.
So this is the location in the former Colts Block Plant. There's three small lots there. The new owners of that property are looking at some development there. I recommended that they consolidate all those lots into one big lot, one parcel, so they don't have to worry about any lot lots or anything when they start the development process. And everything was in order with the city. Micro Unit has a recommendation. He didn't see any problems with it. Planning Commission recommended approval also, and you're at a pretty simple lot consolidation.
Make the motion to approve 650 DuBois Street Generational Land LLC Lot Consolidation.
Second. Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galpin.
Yeah.
Dietz.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Keystone Core Services Blighted Property Inventory Agreement.
Yeah, I'll just talk briefly on that. This is an agreement with Keystone Core Services to do an inventory of blighted properties in a specific area of the city of DuBois. We were looking at some different options to do this, to see if this would make sense for us. Did get to have a conversation. I know that a couple of council members have been looking at this for some time. One of the things we saw as a benefit to this is that they do an inventory of the property, identify what's wrong with the property, then rank them, and then also recommend funding sources and methods to cure the dilapidation. So one thing we really liked about it, too, is it takes away any kind of favoritism or picking on somebody that we run in sometimes from time to time when we're looking at specific properties. So this will be a nice holistic approach. They'll rank them, hey, here's a number one property you have to go after, number two, and so forth down the list. And here's a method to get compliance and potentially some money available to get compliance. This item wasn't specifically budgeted, but it does fall under removal of buildings, so we thought that there is room in the budget for this item under that removal of buildings line item.
I make the motion to approve the Keystone Core Services Blighted Property Inventory Agreement in the amount of $8,000.
Properly moved in second. Any questions on a motion? Vote on a motion.
Augenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galpin.
Yeah.
Dietz.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.
Downtown DuBois Update. Shirley, could you just tell us how things are going?
Yeah, thank you for having us speak tonight.
Damon.
Oh, sorry. Shirley Daruge, Downtown DuBois Inc. While I'm here, I did want to take an opportunity to just give a brief overview of what our organization does, because there seems to be, you know, questions about that that arises and some confusion. As a Main Street program, our purpose is to revitalize and preserve the historic character and economic vitality of our downtown by fostering, encouraging collaboration among local businesses, collaboration in building relationships with the government and the community. We aim to create a vibrant, attractive, and sustainable center for commerce, culture, and community life. Our focus is on economic development, strengthening the local economy by supporting small businesses, attracting new investment, and promoting tourism. Historic preservation, preserving the unique architectural heritage of our downtown area while encouraging adaptive reuse and modernization that respects the community's history. Community engagement, bringing residents, business owners, and local stakeholders together to create a sense of pride, connection, and shared vision for the future of our downtown. And design and aesthetics, which is enhancing the visual appeal and functionality of the public spaces, improving streetscapes, and creating a welcoming environment for both residents and visitors. Having open and collaborative discussions with the city redevelopment authority to achieve the desired improvements, such as, like I had brought about the grant for the trees, flower baskets, working together to create and to also fund these projects. So moving forward with our updates. I'm going to start with our equitable entrepreneurial ecosystem, which Main Street America refers to as E3, which has been an ongoing project. Back in early of this spring of this year, Downtown DuBois Inc. was selected as one of 30 communities nationwide to receive the pilot program of funding through Main Street America and the Kaufman Foundation. We had an in-person visit with Main Street America. Some of our council were present, redevelopment authority, our board, investors from the community, you know, we had a nice group of us in here that were in attendance for that. Then that was phase two. Phase three, which we just completed, virtual sessions that took place in June and July. Then Main Street America provided virtual workshops to the downtown businesses, and those took place the end of August. That information had been sent out via email to all the businesses. Now we are preparing for phase four. All the managers from the communities that were selected, which is 30 total nationwide, we now are required to attend virtual sessions together throughout the months of October and November. And then we will move into phase five and hopefully tie up that program. In addition to the Main Street America, I have been, one of the things that was discussed was all these different COGS, all these different groups, organizations that do various things for the business community, not necessarily working together. Some of us overlap what we do. So I have sat down with Corin Riley from the SBC. We are organizing and putting together a group of us from North Central, Career Link, Chamber Commerce, Launchbox, and DCED. We will be putting together a program and pamphlet source. We will be conducting in-person visits throughout the downtown to all the businesses. We will be arranging that with each of the business owners to take place the end of September and beginning of October. So anybody with a downtown business, I'll be in touch to arrange that with them. Other projects that we are working on, obviously, the empty lot down at, for the E3 program with the funding that we will receive from the Kaufman Foundation will go towards the incubator shed program that will go quarter long and jarred.
I'd like some trees there, too.
Yes.
We'll talk to you about that.
Yeah, and I have the design, which I can share. Also, with the 40 West Long, I also have the design.
Same thing.
Yes. Downtown DuBois Matters, we are doing a campaign program that we are in the works with, so that will be coming out. We have a downtown visitors guide that we are working on putting together that will be going out to all the hotels, everything, but it'll incorporate all the downtown businesses and a map and events, all of that. Facade grants. We, through DCED, are awarded, well, we apply for and get awarded for facade grants. We have $29,000 approximately still available. If anybody is interested, please contact myself. I am the facade coordinator, and Steve Way had been the facade coordinator. He will be assisting me on some of it as we make this transition.
Can you tell us about any of the projects that are going to happen? With your facade program?
Right now, one of the ones is Luigi's with the mural paintings and his, the Luigi sign will be replaced. The United Way, they're getting new awnings placed on there, you know, down there. They haven't all of that replaced, restored. So those are two projects right now that are underway.
Okay.
And then we still have Through Truck Mondays going on, and Farmers Market every Saturday through October 5th. We have the Scarecrow Light Post Decorating Contest going on. Everybody get, as of this past weekend, can start working on their light posts. Those have to be done by September 15th. Voting starts September 16th. We'll go through October 20th. We will award the winner at the Sunny 106 Halloween Parade on Halloween night. We have our Grapes and Hops coming up September 21st. Our Bingos will start back up for the winter, starting in November. Downtown, we are going to do again a downtown wreath fundraiser for the businesses, and we, I've already started working on the Bright in the Night, reached out to all the schools. Letters had to be out to the schools by September 1st. They've all been contacted. They're already filtering back in, getting the schools aligned, the youth groups, all of that to take part, to boost, create a bigger event. So all of that. Shop Small Saturday, which will be November 30th, up on the shelf, and photos with Santa and Mrs. Floss, and a holiday church tour. So that brings us to the end of the year. Now into the Main Street Matters, our program redesignation. So I know that's the part you were waiting for.
That's the part I was waiting for.
But I wanted to make sure I covered everything, so you know what I've been up to. And our, my board and everybody has been playing a very active role in all of this. We are very happy with the state budget, the results of the state budget. Previously, the state had allotted $5 million towards Main Street program. This year, it has been bolstered up to $20,000, or I'm sorry, $20 million to go out to Main Street programs, to help small businesses, to help the Main Street program sustainability, because that has been an issue throughout communities throughout the state. So we had been waiting, there was a long delay of the guidelines that were to be released. That information was released this past Wednesday, September 4th, and what we found is a lot of our program stays relatively the same. Just the funding increase and the application deadlines and stuff like that had been changed. I had spoken with Bill Arrowood and Julie Fitzpatrick from PDC, as well as Kristy Martone, to see if there was anything additional that we needed to know that was important or that I could forward on to you. Per the response, Bill had stated, as of right now, our program is on track. We are right where we need to be for applying for Main Street designation. He would expect us to submit our application early first quarter of 2025.
How long before they're approved?
It will depend if they kick it back.
May we hear some stuff?
Yes.
Okay. Keep us, keep me informed on that.
Okay, yes. And then the next step for us at this point is to start looking at the results of the perception survey and the market data, as well as creating a transformative five-year strategy. But with the perception study, it's still available online, so it has not come to completion yet. It is imperative that we have as many people complete it, because PDC will not pull it until they have so many responses.
Okay.
So that will delay us.
We don't have the number.
Yeah, and we don't know that number. They haven't given us a number. They will inform us. So I have it listed up, I just reposted it again today on Facebook. If people could go and just complete the survey to help speed up this process and help us, because that will ultimately define our five-year strategic plan for the downtown. And so that's where I'm at with that.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
Or whenever you would like to. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Tree planting. This is something, of course, I'm planting, have a good feeling about, would like to do. Probably going to be about 50 to 70 trees planted this fall. Going to need help planting them. If we can get help to do it, then we don't have to pay somebody to do it. We've got two grants, one from Dongtar and one from Giant. Giant has agreed to plant the trees that we have. That allows us to plant twice as many trees, because we don't have to pay somebody else to get it. And Dongtar's going to plant trees, so that'll give us twice. So actually, I have more trees than I thought I would have this year. But we still have a lot of trees that we're going to get help with, and if we can get help with them, we can plant more trees. Okay? So we'll work on that. The other one is downtown trees. We're working on a program that'll put probably five or six real trees downtown, and we're looking at containers, large containers, to put flowers and a small tree in. Okay? We realize those trees aren't going to last forever. They're going to be, need to replace every five or seven, 10 years, depending on the trees that we get. Okay? But we think that'll add a lot to downtown, just to break it up a little bit. And we are very serious about doing something about downtown. That's why we're working on the blight, that's why we're planting trees. We need to do something so our employers have something to sell. They can sell DuBois. Like I said, I've always said this, you know, we're all from DuBois, we know how good it is, great place to raise kids, great place to live and work, but bringing somebody in from a city, it's a pretty tough sale sometimes for our employers. So we're doing our best to make it so they have a better chance of bringing, to supply the employees that they need. Okay? That was just information. I do have, just to tell the council, I do have three places to get the containers from, and I've made it, I'll show you all that stuff, and we'll make a decision later on. We'll talk to Shirley about the grant, so we'll go from there. Okay? We received a lot of reports. Chief, you guys are busy. Zach, you've been very busy, doing a good job, appreciate it, and the other departments also. We're going to move right into public comments. When you make a comment, direct it to us up front here, and state your name and your address clearly. Okay? So go ahead. Yes?
Hi, Lisa Goller, Downtown DuBois Inc. and Farmers Insurance. I have a business downtown. I had just so happened to have been standing, but I actually have stuff to piggyback off of Shirley's stuff. She got to say all the good stuff. To keep an open line of communication, we also wanted to bring a few concerns to the board, just in general. The community knows that, we just wanted to make you aware of a few things. We wanted to, when it came to the pots, basically, I don't know if this is a question or concern, just to make sure, when you're talking about the large three, four-foot pots downtown with trees.
Yep.
We need to make sure there are a lot of sidewalks that aren't wide enough. We, I have a lot of customers of mine that travel on with scooters, electric scooters, wheelchairs. We do need to make sure that, I just wanted to make that point, to just be very aware of where we're putting them, that we're not blocking sidewalks for accessibility. The last couple of weeks, we've had a few discussions. We have three kind of overlapping issues that we wanted to make sure we brought to the council that affect the downtown group, community members, and, like I said, I'm a downtown business owner. One is homelessness. It's been observed by myself and several others in the community, an increased measure of homeless people conglomerating in the downtown areas. There was a recent issue of a removal of a marble bench downtown in the Pershing parking lot. We had, were the one reason that was given to us why it was removed until Shirley went and approached the city to have it replaced or returned. Park benches play an important role in urban spaces. We have to have areas for people to rest, socialize, walking around downtown. We have to have areas for people to rest, socialize, walking around downtown. Removing the benches in order to defer, deter homelessness is not effective and actually negatively impacts the broader community. Benches serve everyone in the city, elderly, disabled, parents with kids, people on lunch breaks, even tourists. You know, we go downtown for Food Truck Mondays to get a drink or get something to eat. You want a place to sit down. You can't take away benches. We actually plan on putting more benches and we would really prefer that they not be taken away after we put them in.
We'll need approval. We'll need approval by the council.
Oh, absolutely. I, she already has the.
Okay.
There's a lot of different people that rely on public seating. Obviously homelessness is a complex challenge, you know, a complex issue from housing, mental health, drugs. There's a lot of different reasons and causation. Obviously, removing benches doesn't address any of these root causes and only shifts the visibility problem to some other area. We want public spaces to be welcoming for all, including like picnic areas. I know I personally like to be able to go eat my pizza in the pocket park next to Frank's Pizza. We don't want public gathering spaces to be taken away. And that leads me into the, the next part of this is skilled games and associating negative activities. These gaming locations are placed strategically to take advantage of our low-income residents in the downtown. Along with that comes issues with pockets of homelessness, drug and criminal activity. Homeless people are sleeping inside the gaming locations. Community residents are offered drugs when they go in. I had a friend who, her and her husband decided, eh, we got nothing better to do, let's go down and, you know, play some slots, play some games. She was approached, hey, do you know this person? Oh, they owe me money. If they, if you see the, and twice within an hour is offered drugs. She was offered pills. She didn't know this person. She was offered pills and within that hour, well, if you don't want pills, I have some Oxin strips too, if you wanna buy some. Can you imagine walking into any, to Luigi's or even any of our bars and just sitting down and be offered drugs from some random stranger? This is not appropriate and it brings a lot of other issues into our downtown. We have overdoses on George Street. We have people breaking into the machines. It brings crime. City Council proposing to add $1,000 fee to each machine per year doesn't do anything. They might make that in a week or sometimes a day. It doesn't address any of the other issues. Philadelphia has banned them entirely. Why can't we? It, it's like three lines in their city code. I printed it off. Our downtown footprint should not be a haven for drug activity, homelessness and crime. It exacerbates the already difficult job we have trying to improve the aesthetics, economic development and livability in our downtown space. Previously, we were in discussions with the former police chief prior to his dismissal about a designated beat cop. A police officer downtown is needed on foot to be able to walk into these locations to help deter some of the criminal activity and unlawful loitering. There are people that are afraid to walk their dogs at night downtown. Yes, we have lights now, which is great. Now we can see all the loitering and homelessness. Police officers are frontline, boots on the ground. There are safety officers. It's, I know it's bigger than them, it's not all their job. We have a greater community need to address these issues. There are state, county, local programs. But we want to reopen the discussion with the city and the police department about having a designated downtown on-foot cop. Driving by these locations don't help. There are hidden places in the pocket parks. We know where people, if you live in town, you know where people gather to do drugs. If there was a cop, even plainclothes, sitting in there playing with a machine for an hour who is offered drugs, if you knew that the cops were walking in and out randomly, it's gonna at least bring some of that down. And that's about it, really. We just wanna reopen some of this discussion. These things have been really kind of noticed lately in everybody's face pretty blatantly. We do appreciate you giving us time to give our, our good stuff that we're doing, but also to keep open communication with the city of the things that we're seeing specifically in the downtown that are concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments?
Yes.
Lisa LaBrasca Becker. Mine's just a question about, this week's 9/11 and it's not on the, I didn't know if the city of DuBois was going to be open, if we're having any special thing in the parks or for 9/11. That's, that's very important. I know you're a military man, so I didn't, it wasn't on the agenda, so I didn't know if we, if there were anything planned for that on Wednesday.
We don't have any, anything specific planned. The office will be closed from 9:30 to 2:00 for a staff meeting, though, on that date.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
But Treasure Lake is doing, having a service at 8:30 a.m. at their memorial up there.
What, what's that time?
8:30 a.m.
Two, two?
No, no. The office will be closed from 9:30 till 2:00, but yeah, the Treasure Lake Memorial Service is at 8:30.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Michael Clement, 17 North Brady Street. Mayor, I know there's been a lot going on, but I just wanna thank the council, quite frankly. It's not easy to do the right thing. It's really not easy to do the right thing. And people, our, our leadership is stepping up to do the right thing for our city on many issues. We even saw one tonight over waste management. It doesn't go unnoticed by me about a year ago, I had a radio program with then acting Mayor Ed Walsh and Sandy Supervisor Sam Malika talk about garbage with me for a moment. Seemed like a lot of money was coming back to the city of DuBois. There was a huge debate whether or not it's a slush fund or whatever. We'll let authorities and everyone else figure that out. But my question, and I hope you consider this, because I asked the then mayor, if we're taking back all this money, why don't we use it to give a tax break to the folks who make all this available in the first place? Because I wanted to ask Mr. Yonner, why do we get all this money back? If you can save the taxpayers money, that's what we should be doing instead of a rate increase. But I also wanna point out that doing the right thing isn't always popular. You guys are taking a lot of heat for things that you've, quite frankly, inherited all of this mess that we find ourselves in. I know not one thing that this city council, the new city council has done, except being cleanup mode for the last year plus since this has started, the last eight, nine months, whatever it is now that we have a new council, where every day it seems like something else pops up that we have to deal with. Becomes a big issue for people because it's still, the truth isn't being told. And when our community hears the facts, they're going to back this city council because the facts speak for themselves. So I just wanna applaud you and please, the DuBois people, the very best of our city, can handle the truth that's going to come out. It's no secret that this investigation's still going on. It's no secret that you were subpoenaed the other day. We know that you were. Tell the truth about every issue coming out there so that when people put their stories in the newspaper or whatever, let the residents hear it because they can handle it. But I thank you for doing the right thing because it's not easy.
Anybody else?
Almost forgot.
I've got something to say.
It's actually for Ed Yonner.
I know, but we, we can't.
Marks in the traffic, 614 West Waterfront Avenue. I just wanted to ask him how long our, our timeline is for our landfill up at Kersey. I mean, I used to read about that stuff in the paper about, you know, they get denied different places and Kersey's has been there for quite a long time now. And I don't know what, you know, that's gonna affect the city greatly if it ever does not, you know, take that trash from us, you know, anymore. I was just wondering, I was just, that, I was pondering, how does that?
See if I can find it out for now. Go ahead, Jeff.
Debbie Meckling, DuBois. First of all, I'd like to thank Lisa Gobbler for opening our eyes to the reality of what is going on in our area. We've all seen it and we all turn a blind eye to it. And it is long past time to address it and I would love to see the skilled games out of here. I also wanna thank Michael Clement for his lauding of what council has been attempting to do. The issue I wanna talk about tonight is on May 8th, 2024, I filed a right-to-know request about a concern I had. My request was for an explanation as to why on March 20th, 2024, the former city solicitor, Tony Cherry, was in a 45-minute meeting with the city treasurer, Lisa LaBrasca Becker, in a restricted area of the city building behind closed doors. What business was so private that it was necessary, necessary to be behind closed doors with our former city solicitor? On May 14th, I received a letter in the mail from our city manager, Sean Arbaugh. It reads as follows. Ms. Meckling, thank you for writing the city of DuBois with your request for information pursuant to the Pennsylvania right-to-know. On May 8th, 2024, you submitted a right-to-know request asking questions regarding what business Tony Cherry was conducting in the city building on March 20th. The request did not seek any specific documents and therefore cannot be granted or denied under the right-to-know law. Respectfully, Sean Arbaugh. My simple question, months later, still remains unanswered as to what business was being conducted between our former solicitor and our city treasurer that was deemed necessary to be held behind closed doors for 45 minutes? When is it necess, when it is necessary for me to raise questions or require an explanation of an issue with the city treasurer? Our meetings are in the foyer at the window and generally people are in line behind me overhearing whatever business I am addressing. Transparency has been demanded by the DuBois taxpayers with the appointments of new council members in January of 2024. The optics of a closed-door meeting between former solicitor Cherry and city treasurer LaBrasca Becker leaves many more questions than answers.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
No group over, DuBois.
And where do you, what street? What street?
Washington.
Thank you.
You're talking about these skilled machines. Should look into it that they aren't removed out of the clubs. I'm personally involved at the club and they do monitor who comes in and plays them and everything. And the money that comes back, at least to this club, is put back into the community through fire companies, the schools, the small baseball teams. So an increase in the amount would affect what we put back into the community. Sure. And then with the, the Swiss Vanu men thing, we've had a problem with them with our container. It's been filled up a couple of times. We've called, they won't come in, they'll say, oh, next schedule, that's when we'll be back. And here over the week, this Labor Day weekend here, they came on Sunday night and instead of Monday morning, when they've always come when the business is closed, and they couldn't dump it. We called, we were on the telephone for 20 minutes to half hour trying to get a hold of somebody. And when they did finally come up, the guy that kind said that he wouldn't dump it because it was, there was 10 bags over the limit. So we emptied the, took the bags off and called them back and they, they finally did send another person and he dumped that and he helped us actually put the bags that we'd taken off back into that dumpster and dumped that. We told them that the lid on our dumpsters has been busted. They haven't done anything with it. They want an increase to it. They, they need an increase, they better get better service. Thank you very much.
Yes?
I just wanna clarify, Lisa Gobbler, downtown, we also are not, for the downtown group, we have no issue with the gaming machines in clubs, bars. Again, you have to be 21 to enter. Don't even really have an issue with them at some of the convenience stores. Those are manned, there's employees there and most, for most of the cameras. Our issue is the very specific ones that are in our downtown footprint that are very unmanned or very limited manned that have no oversight are the ones we have an issue with. I agree absolutely, the clubs do put a lot back into our communities and we have no issue with that. I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Sam?
Yeah, I have Sam Malika, I'm a Sandy Council resident. I was just wondering if council was gonna consider maybe, with all the pension problems that are coming up, maybe trying to go to Act 47 to, as a distressed community, maybe be a little bit more ransom, if that would be something that could be done or to save, once we consolidate, maybe save some tax dollars for the new city? That would be possible or, you know, just for a short period of time maybe for, I don't know how, how much work that is to try and do if you're considering.
Sorry. Shirley Drew, Downtown DuBois, once again.
Did you speak already?
Twice.
Go ahead.
Apparently I can't get enough.
Go ahead.
So back to the skilled gaming. As a parent of two teens, one of the things with the unmanned skilled game locations is you're opening up a door for teenagers to go in. One, teenagers are not permitted to gamble, gambling ages 21 in the state of Pennsylvania. They are unmanned, so those teenagers have an open door to go in, which presents problem number two, the drugs. With people going in and selling drugs, you are basically providing, you know, as a community, we're all providing locations by keeping them open.
A heated location.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. But for drug use under, you know, to children, to teenagers, and that is a huge concern. Again, as a parent and also as the downtown and, you know, keeping our, our downtown safe for everyone. I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, well, thank you.
So my questions were not addressed, but I asked to be addressed on the agenda and I think many people were tuning in and commenting. It's an elected official, this is not an employee. What is, what led to the relocation of Lisa LaBrasca Becker's office space? It's a fair question.
It is.
Michael Clement did a great job, we're adults, we deserve the truth.
Read that statement. We're gonna get through the question, we'll get, we have a, we have a comment on that.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just didn't want it to not be addressed.
Well, what means at the end?
Thank you.
And we, who, who do that? Anybody else?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
My name is John Leeny, Olive Avenue. And I read in the paper all the time, all the employees that were fired, Joe Mitchell, and then you hire somebody else. and then you hire somebody else with the same background. You're letting people go and replacing them all with Sandy people. What's, what's going on here? I mean, this town is in a big mess right now and taking away original employees can help you. You got to blend evenly, not with just Sandy people. This is Dubois City and Treasure Lake got us in this big shooting match because Sandy Township didn't take care of it. So that's my personal opinion because I see a lot of people being let go and being replaced by people that had the same credentials and I don't understand it why, you know? That's why we're getting all these lawsuits now.
Thank you.
Nancy Moore, Dubois, Green Ridge Drive. You know that I have always, in the past, I have suggested, we do, like other municipalities do, handle the skilled games by zoning and legislation locally. You can't wait for the state. God knows when they'll ever come up. And there are many municipalities that have done that, including Sykesville, a little bit ahead of us. And do we have a drug, a drug task force?
We do.
We do?
Yes, we do.
Yes, absolutely. Now, okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
David Brett, Sandy Township. Just kind of tagging off what she said. The games of skill and waiting for the state, they are the Pennsylvania games of skill. Does the state have a vested interest in keeping them going?
Do they want to tax them?
That's what I mean. You know, they have a vested in, interest in the PA games of skills thriving where downtown communities may not have that same desire.
Yeah, they want to regulate and tax them. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to close that and we're going to answer some of the questions, okay?
Want me to make a statement?
What's that?
Want me to make a statement?
Yes, please.
Okay. City council's asked me to, to read a statement and I'm going to try to modify it a little bit to incorporate a couple of things that were brought up this evening. On September 4th, 2024, the city treasurer, Lisa Becker, provided local media with a copy of her letter to city manager Sean Arbaugh in which the city treasurer made numerous self-serving and false allegations against the mayor, city council, and the city manager. Sadly, her letter is yet another example of the city treasurer's willingness to mislead and distract the public from the true issues facing the city of Dubois. Since January, this city council has worked diligently to address many of the issues brought to light by the criminal indictments filed against the former city manager. Most of the city employees have worked cooperatively with city council. Unfortunately, a few individuals have worked to undermine city council's efforts to bring accountability, integrity, transparency, and true public service back to the city of Dubois. The city treasurer is one of those individuals. City council took appropriate steps to safeguard its efforts and protect the best interests of the city of Dubois while at the same time providing the city treasurer with the resources needed to fulfill her duties. The relocation of the work area for the city treasurer will not impact the operation of any of the city offices. It is business as normal for the residents of the city of Dubois and the services being provided by the city of Dubois. If the city treasurer needs to meet with somebody, she will be provided an opportunity to meet in a secure confidential area if there are questions. The city has chosen not to air all of the reasons why they came to this decision because quite honestly, city council's focused with addressing the true issues that are facing the city of Dubois, not some actions on behalf of one of the elected officials that is contrary in the opinion of city council to the true issues that the city needs to address. The city council considers this matter closed. If it continues to be a public issue at the election of the city treasurer, city council will have no choice but to continue to address this matter and address this matter in a public forum. City council's focused with more important issues to be, quite frankly, to be, speak quite frankly, and they're, they're focused on moving this forward without getting embroiled in a distraction. That's all I have to say on behalf of city council. Thank you.
When it comes to the skilled games, we, we are working on that ordinance as we, it's a little complicated. I want to make sure of everything.
And all of your comments have been part of discussions. Completely understand the issues. It's, it's the unattended games of skills. If their games of skill is frustrating as it is, they're not, it's not gambling in Pennsylvania. As crazy as that seems, if it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's a duck, with my own.
But Philadelphia, it put like three sentences.
I've, I've looked at Philadelphia's, not the, and I made a note and I'll follow up on that.
I have.
I've discussed, because I got to tell you who's the most upset about this, the casino industry.
Absolutely.
So we've looked at Philadelphia's efforts in the past. I'll revisit that because I'm unaware of what you mentioned this evening and we'll take a look at what Philadelphia's done. And I say that kind of cringing because I usually don't say we'll look at what Philadelphia's done as a model, to be quite honest, but we'll take a look at it. City council's discussed it with us. It's, it's, it's a confident, it's a difficult because there are actually legitimate, responsible business owners that are operating it in the correct manner.
And clubs.
And helping and benefiting VFWs and others that truly use the money for the benefit of the community and do it the right way. So I'll continue to communicate with city council, but all of your concerns, they're aware of and they've brought into the discussions.
I can answer the employee question. You, you mentioned that we were hiring a bunch of Sandy employees. We're bringing people over to do double duty work. We're, we're in the middle of a consolidation, so these employees are going to come together. We're just moving a little quicker than we would have hoped to. Bringing those folks together with billing and with some other opportunities that we can consolidate services now to save the taxpayers' money.
It just looks funny, you know, that a lot of employees are gone that were here. And it looks like it's just taking over the same, you know? And I don't think that's, but Joe Mitchell, just for an example, he has the same tickets that the other guy's going to have.
What other guy?
Whoever you hired for.
We didn't.
We didn't hire anybody yet, but we're hiring somebody for economic development.
See, well, you don't explain, the paper doesn't explain it. Nothing comes out in the paper like that.
Okay. Yeah, we, we are presently looking for somebody that can be slash assistant manager and do economic redevelopment, somebody with some experience that can, we have 300 acres that's going to need developed here in the future. We're looking towards the future to do that, okay? Some of the other questions are going to be asked, answered in two weeks. We need to do a little research on that, okay?
Members, councils, comment? Jim?
Yes, speaking of Joe Mitchell, I'd like to thank Joe Mitchell for his years of service to the city of Dubois. You know, he did do a lot of things, was involved in a lot of different operations in the city, helping out wherever he could. You know, I think it's just a shame he still doesn't work for us.
No comment tonight.
Yeah, this was already discussed a lot, but I think that the locations that are exclusively games of, or games of skill are an issue in the, in the city and in the township. And I hate whenever I see the signs up saying another one is coming locally.
Yeah.
So I think we'll work hard to address that and I don't, I don't think that it's as much of an issue when it comes to the clubs that have a machine or two that really do a lot for the community, but the players exclusively is an issue that we need to look at deeper.
Elliot, comments?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay. Chief, I'd like to get together with you sometime this week and discuss some of the issues that were talked about tonight, okay? Maybe the three of us or any other council member that wants to, to be involved, okay? I'll, I'll send out an email with some times that we can get, all get together, okay? All right, thanks. Motion adjourned.
Say move.
Second.
Rock, paper, scissors, move and second. Vote on a motion.
Audenbaum.
Yes.
Jackson, yes. Skelpin.
Yep.
Eats.
Yes.
Three, four.
Yes.
Philadelphia, we had to have liquor licenses, a casino license, or seating. That would take care of all the issues. But then the judge just said that they can uphold it for now until the state comes out with something.
Yes, sir. It was designed to be safe.